Ready? I'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting of October. Get the date right, 22nd, 2020. Call to roll, please.
Commissioner Flicker?
Here.
Commissioner Britton. Commissioner Chapman. Commissioner Sears.
Here.
Vice Chair Jenkins. Chairperson Derling.
Here.
Would you please rise and join me in the presence of the leaders? Salute. Begin. The Planning Commission.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Consent calendar has one item, it's approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes by any of the commissioners?
Mr. Chairperson, before we get to that, we have public communication of non- of hearing of non-agenda items.
On the first page, last line.
What did I do wrong again? Oh. This is the time to address the commi- oh. Yeah, I got out of the habit because there's nobody here. This is the time to address the commission about any item not listed on the agenda. And if you wish to address the commission on an item listed on the agenda, please follow the directions listed above, which is, if it's on the calendar, fill out a blue card and give it to the secretary. And if it's not on the agenda, we listen to you, but we can't take any action on it. Okay, now we can go.
Did we have anybody submitted anything?
Nope.
Are we supposed to ask if there's anybody here that wishes to?
Mr. Chairperson, I did receive one written communication later today, and so Dawn is going to read it for you guys. Thank you. Dear Commissioners, I hereby oppose the subdivision as presented on October 1st for General Plan 20-01, zoning amendment, zoning change 20-02, tentative subdivision map, TSM 20-01, and proposed annexation. I believe that the area residents have not been properly noticed. I live on Biggs Avenue and I received no notice. I am in the, hold on, I'm getting a glare. I am in the referenced Gianna Heights subdivision. This thermalito area has had several fires this year within a mile, and evacuation. Traffic congestion and overcrowding are primary concerns. We have substandard fire hydrants on our streets and no sidewalks. Most of the streets do not have proper shoulder- shoulders on the road for pulling over or walking, and are narrow streets. Additionally, Ruddy Creek has recognized FEMA flood zone issues. This project would exacerbate the drainage problems and send more drainage downstream in winter. The creek itself could benefit from some California fish and wildlife maintenance and reduce the silt buildup. Added drainage to Ruddy Creek would cause floodwaters to overtop the bridge on Biggs Avenue. It almost overtopped last year, anyway, falling apart by about four to six inches. Neighboring properties are flooded regularly. The quarter acre lots proposed are a textbook case of overcrowding. Most lots in the area are a fourth to a fifth half acre, or quarter- fortieth to a fiftieth half acre. I am in a half acre lot and appreciate the degree of privacy that brings with it. People like the rural residential feel I am not in favor of rezoning at all. This type of overpopu- or with this type of overpopulation. With 97 units proposed, the traffic will likely double. I cannot imagine 100 to 200 more cars on the two main streets. There are schools in the area and many children still walk or ride their bicycles with no way to get off the streets. This is a constant safety hazard for them and all pedestrians in the area. Added traffic will not increase their safety. I am not in favor of annexation. Either soon thermo- or either soon thermalito will be an island to the city of Orville. I see no benefit to the annexation to the city of Orville. This will place a strain on the thermalito water in Sewer District 2. Please take another look at the problems this creates for our area. Also, please explain to me why Orville Planning Commission is hearing a project in Butte County unincorporated area. It seems you are stretching your sphere of influence rather far out. What happens to the two to three miles of thermalito in between? Other than their annexation requests, I feel it more appropriate that Butte County Planning Commission should be hearing this development proposal. Sincerely, Robin and Thomas Bennett.
Yes.
Correct.
And this. For consent, we will be guilty.
Yeah, it was just addressed to the Planning Commission, so we wanted to make sure you guys heard it as well.
I approve, I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 1st, 2020.
I'll second that. Mine's not on.
Tap your screen.
Mine's screen is not, I, oh, there we go, I tried to turn it on. Thank you.
Motion carries.
Sorry. There's a limit on the amount of time, it's two minutes. So we'll open the hearing on a particular item. Staff will make a presentation, there might be questions of staff. There'll be a public comment session, and then the public comment session's closed, and then the commission debates and takes action. That's kind of the procedure. Okay, item two, modification of use permit. UP 20-05.
Thank you, Commissioners. On July 23rd, the Planning Commission approved a use permit for off-sale alcohol sales at Collins and Denny's Market at 434 Plumas Avenue. We made the appropriate findings and such, but as has happened twice before, we learned too late that there is an overconcentration of this type of alcohol sales in this census tract, number 29. In fact, there's an overconcentration in all our census tracts. So in order for ABC to issue the liquor license, we must, the Planning Commission must approve a letter of public convenience and necessity. And so we, we ask that you do so.
Open the public hearing on this, is anyone here regarding the, the item, want to make a?
Mr. Chairperson, I have.
Comments?
I have not received any public communication on this item.
Okay. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion by planning commissioners, if there is any. And I wait a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the modified use permit 20-05 with, do I need to read the rest of it? Revising finding number nine relating to the public convenience or necessity.
And approve a letter.
Oh, and approve a letter of public convenience, I see that.
And the adoption of resolution.
Adoption, okay.
Adoption, resolution.
Adopt resolution number P 2020-18.
I'll second.
There's a second, there's a motion of second.
Susan.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item three is Lakeside Place 2, and number 2, subdivision tentative map extension. Staff?
Yes, Commissioners, there is a map in front of you. This is Lakeside, the second phase, which was approved back in 2007. The first phase has been built, and it's west of the airport and the golf course on Highway 162. This is Phase 2. You extended the map last year for one year to give the applicant time to design and build the homes in Phase 2. Fifty-six lots, and they are again requesting another one-year extension. They have called and they hope to submit plans in December and start construction in March. So they don't anticipate needing another extension. Today also, we learned that this extension is also pre-approved for 18 months by Assembly Bill 1561, which was signed by Governor Newsom on September 28th of this year, just less than a month ago. Nevertheless, the applicant has requested this extension be formalized by the Planning Commission, and staff recommends approval. Oh, one, one other note, I'm sorry. Resolution P 2020-17 was inadvertently omitted from the packet, and that is in front of you as well. It's identical to last year's resolution, except the dates have been changed to protect the innocent.
Questions of staff? I have a question. The state approved it at what date, how many months ago?
This, this AB 1561 extends automatically for 18 months, any
Yeah.
housing entitlement, including a tentative subdivision map.
But from what date is that extension? Eighteen months, beginning when?
Any active map.
No.
Oh, from tod-.
What, what?
Yes, from today till 18 months, so it would expire end of June 2022.
Actually, it said it was ineffective from March 4th, because it was done quite a while ago.
Okay, that's my point, is that by, by them, by us approving this extension, it actually gives them a little more time. About two months. And I just want that on the record.
Okay.
Okay, let's open the public hearing. Do we have anybody here from the public, applicant?
Nope.
Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any discussion by the commissioners? And we're ready for a motion, if anyone's ready for a motion.
Your turn, Randy.
Are we waiting for a motion?
Yeah, I said.
Oh, okay, I thought she was saying something.
No.
I said, your turn, Randy.
Oh.
We're, we're ready for a motion.
It's not on.
You can push on it.
You have to do it on the, on the pad now.
It's on now.
I'll move we adopt resolution number P 2020-17.
I'll second that.
And there's a motion and a second? Any discussion? Vote. Anyone want to change their vote? Seeing none?
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll go to item four, California Water Service Treatment Unit Minor Use Permit. Staff?
Yes, Commissioners. The plan, yeah. This project is mandated by regulation, the Department of Water Resources, is that correct? Drinking water. And this is a treatment unit that will, will treat water at an existing well, number 10, which is at 1185 Feather River Boulevard, right next to Bedrock Park and right next to the skate park. The use permit is a minor use permit. It's, it's not certain that this is actually required for this project, but since it's in an R3 zone, and since it's a rather large addition to this facility, we worked it out so that the applicant has requested a use permit to protect everyone concerned. Greg Silva and George Barber are here to make a short presentation about the project. This was a subject of the Development Review Meeting on October 15th last week, and the Development Review Committee recommended approval with the following commissions, sorry, conditions, recommended conditions. One, that they work with Purple Line Winery, whose property is immediately behind and adjacent, to discuss whether trees or other screening behind, it makes sense, and hopefully, Greg, you've talked to them since, okay? To complete shoulder paving on the roadway above the facility to help stabilize the hillside. And this is in lieu of the normally required curb gutter and sidewalk. And then Fire had recommended crash barriers around the new tanks, just to ensure that no vehicles damaged them. And that is within the fence line, so it's a recommendation, and that's, I think, probably up to the applicant, whether they actually want to do that. They also have a fully fenced site and boulders along the base to discourage vehicular incursions.
So again, this was mandated by the Department of Drinking Water, that we install.
It's on.
It's on.
Okay, there we go. So this was mandated, mandated by the Department of Drinking Water, because they had asked us, and as most water companies, they are asking them to test for, it's called PFOS, PFOA, and it's a new contaminant. They've have decided that it possibly could cause cancer in the future, if somebody keeps ingesting it. So we will be treating for that to make sure that is not provided in our water. We remove it, and this will remove it, this is granulated activated carbon. So these vessels will contain that, and the water will run through it. The carbon will absorb the contaminant, and again, we'll be providing that fresh water for our customers and meeting all regulations. So that's a quick overview of it.
Do you have any report on your conversations with Purple Line at all?
Yes, I did talk to the owner of Purple Line, George Barber.
Not that one.
But another one. And George was all for, he would very much like to see the tree removed, it's quite a nuisance for him. It drops needles, and there's a couple of broken branches in the bough. So, yeah, he's all for removing it, and he knows it eliminates some shade, but he's, he's good with it, and the vessels will look like part of the winery, so he's okay with that, so. No, so we had a great conversation, no, we, we've talked before, and we can long find. Yeah. Do you have any questions?
Maybe we could paint a mural on him down the road, who knows? You never know, yeah.
I'll just jump in, I'm George Barber. I'm the district manager over Orville as well, Greg's the operations manager. So this is a project that we weren't anticipating, so we really appreciate the city's help in cooperating with us to try and get this completed. We actually had to turn the well off, and we're only, it's only set to be used for fire flow at this point, because when we found out there's a contaminant in it, we did not want to deliver that water, except for extreme emergencies. PFOS is a chemical that is measured in parts per trillion. Stuff's getting smaller and smaller that they can find, and so we're working really hard. We're talking droplets in a, in a swimming, Olympic-sized swimming pool. So we appreciate you working with us. We're doing all we can to keep the costs down to our customers on this project. We are utilizing some vessels from Chico, right? So we had some vessels that did a clean, some cleanup work at a well in Chico, and we were able to move those over here to Orville to help cut down on the cost of the project. And we just were, we're looking forward to get this online as quick as we can, so we have that backup well source.
Any questions of the applicant? None? I have a couple. Is the scale of this a real scale, and you have a figure here, a human figure, which kind of gives you a scale of the size of this?
We have a, we have our engineer on the, on the line, he's the one that developed these drawings, so.
That's not to scale, there's no human figure. Those are 16-foot tanks at the very top, in the ground there.
Yeah, how tall is?
16 feet.
15?
16, to the very top.
One-six.
Top of the apparatus is 16.
Okay, because if you look at the human thing, it looks like about 30 feet. All right. And you're, you're placing boulders?
The boulders have been there for a number of years already.
So you're not adding any, any boulders?
No, no, what happened was
we've had a number of youngsters, spirited youngsters from.
That's where I was going.
Yeah, from the skate park. They like to take their little four-wheel drive units and drive the trucks over the berm there, and so the rocks were placed to, to eliminate that. And then we were asked to put a fencing up, and we did poster ballards, and that has reduced the travel through the area there, so. Back in the day, there was, was another engineer here that we worked with, and he was happy to see these ballards put in, and so it has helped contain some of the craziness that goes on in the evenings.
I have another question. The security barbed wire thing at the top?
Uh huh.
Faces inwards, like it's prevent somebody from getting out?
If you see in the picture that's up right now, you can see they're facing inward?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that does help, it's, once you get to the top, it's really hard to climb the rest of the way over.
Usually you face it outward, so you have to crawl backwards, and I mean, I, I was on a secure thing for a few years in the Army, and, and it was always out, because if they climbed the fence, they had to crawl backwards. Isn't that, isn't the case, I'm just curious why it.
It has to do with, I think, the property.
Prevent somebody from inside.
Do you know the exact answer on that?
I have a pretty good answer on that one, and it comes down to liability. So when you face it outward, it will keep them from getting over.
Right.
But they're more apt to try and hurt themselves, which can actually turn into a liability issue. So you put it on inside and you discourage them from even trying.
And then they have to crawl over it?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairperson, I have Louis on, Luis on here that wants to speak, when you want to give him a moment, too. I think from Cal Water.
Yeah, he's with the applicant.
He's our engineer.
Okay. So when you want to acknowledge him, he'll.
What do I do, just say?
Yes.
Speak, whoever it is. I don't see anyone, so.
Hello, I hope.
There you are, I'm here.
Hope you guys can hear me okay?
Yes.
I wanted to address just a couple of things on the, the scale of the isometric view. As you guys can see, at the bottom of the, the figure, it says not to scale, or, or design consultants did the best to, to, to scale it, but it's just not scaled, and as far as the barbed wire, I think we can take a look at that. I think George, I think, put his, his finger on the money there, that, that's one of the reasons. But we can check with the, with our design consultants to make sure that, that the appropriate orientation is made, and that we, we take a look at all angles, respect to that barbed wire.
Have any questions of this gentleman? Thank you.
She's back. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other participants wanting to make a comment, we'll close the public hearing. And commissioners have any discussion, or any further questions, if anyone? If not, ready for a motion.
Okay. I will move that we adopt a categorical exemption under SEQA, adopt the findings for use permit number UP 20-07, approve use permit 20-07 with the recommended conditions of approval, and adopt resolution number P 2020-21.
It's on.
I'll second that.
Now, we have a motion of second. Anyone want to change their vote? Seeing none?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for.
Thank you.
When are you doing this?
Once we get the permits all through, then we'll start construction, well, we'll go off the bid and start construction. So hopefully, we'll have it up and running by the first of the year.
Over the winter then, okay.
It looks like the engineer has an answer as well, he's raising his hand again.
I couldn't hear you.
Yeah, the engineer wants.
Oh, the engineer wants to talk again, go ahead.
Oh, hi, it's Luis again. Yeah, I think Greg. Yeah, I think Greg is correct. We're shooting, obviously, want to get this well back to be a backup for a water treatment plan. We, you know, we've been working on the fast track because it's the primary source of backup for the water treatment plan. And in case it needs to go down for maintenance, we want to get it done as soon as possible. We're shooting for roughly, you know, the turn of the year. But we know that there is a process. So, you know, if we manage to get things installed in January, late January, I think that'll be a success. Again, understanding that it's a process to get this project accomplished.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there? Jackie, is there anything that tells me that there's somebody that I can see that, you know?
Mr. Chairperson, because we have the, we had the display going on, I couldn't have them on your screen. But I can put them up now that we're done with the presentation.
Because she was screen sharing the pictures. She couldn't put them as up as well.
You can't split it, split them.
No.
So.
One or the other.
Okay.
Now, if we had another talker, we could do it. There he is.
That's okay, because I was looking here to see, you know, something to tell me that there's somebody want to talk.
That's what she does.
It was up to Jackie to let you know.
Well, now you can see it as well. But I just, I couldn't put them up there while the presentation was on.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go to item five. ZC 20-01, change of the zoning code. This has been a lot of work, staff.
Commissioner Darling, Chairperson, or other commissioners. Again, this is our final draft of the sign ordinance code. This also provides clearer planning commission authority, stiffer maintenance requirements, and all around a little more thorough codes for our businesses within the community. As you know, this has been a long process, five years coming. Many of you were here through the whole process. And I think with all the workshops and the many discussions that we've had, we have a pretty strong final amendment here for you. Any questions?
Okay, open the public hearing. We just heard from staff. I don't see anybody in the audience.
Mr. Chairperson, I do have one person from STAT Outdoor Advertising on the line. I'm not sure if he wants to speak or if he's just here. And he is unmuted if you would like to hear from him.
Yes, this is Greg Redeker, STAT Outdoor Advertising. Just wanted to thank the commission for all your efforts for amending the code.
Thank you for being here and giving us a lot of good comments, too. It was.
You're very welcome.
Really good. Appreciate that. Okay. If you don't have any questions or discussion with staff or amongst ourselves, I've read through the whole thing again. It was a little hard because there was no colorization of the. So I really had to, I had to look at, try to find certain things. But I didn't find anything that I would want to comment to make a change. I don't know. Is that the same for the rest of the commissioners?
Pretty good.
Then I think we're ready for a motion. An important motion, a five-year waiting motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2020-19.
I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to adopt ZC 20-01. Does anyone want to change their vote? Seeing none?
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Commissioner Darling?
Yes.
Just to note that the next step in this, to get it finalized, is to take it to the city council on your recommendation. And then it'll go to, it'll have two readings, and then it can become enacted.
Yeah, I'd like.
Yeah, 30 days after the second reading.
I want to attend that meeting. I don't want to go and necessarily say anything. In fact, I don't know if I'm allowed to say anything. I don't know if I represent the commissioners if I'm there. Do I?
Ask the planning chair.
But I think if the council has questions, I ought to be there. So I want to know the date in case I miss it in the paper or whatever. I'd like an email.
Okay.
The week before or whatever to confirm the date. That'd be okay? Okay. And I also want to thank staff again, especially for this young man. He worked his tail off on it, too. And everyone may not know, but this is his first time on a project like this. Did real well.
He does a great job.
The whole staff did real. I'm sure thankful Don came back. Okay. Item six, zoning change 20-03, changes to the zoning code.
Commissioners, our young man Connor will make the presentation on this item.
So, final one. Okay, so commissioners, this is similar to the general plan amendments at the last commission meeting where we have multiple minor amendments for one staff report. So this staff report includes four minor amendments to the Orville Municipal Code zoning ordinance. These were, some of them are updates that are, probably should have been done a while ago, minor changes that haven't kept up to date with changes in state legislation and with the city's general plan. So what this does is it corrects four of those minor issues that were present in the zoning code. With the first one, table 17.28.010-1, allowed uses in residential districts. What this does is prohibits single-family dwelling units in RP, R3, and R4 zones. Currently, those are permitted within those zones as outlined on the table. However, general plan policy P 3.6 reads prohibit detached family, single-family homes within these zoning districts. So what this will do is just align that with the city's general plan policy. Any questions on that first item? The second one, table 17.32.010-1, allowed uses in commercial districts. What this does is it corrects the mini-storage overlay reference. Currently, on this table in commercial districts, if someone is looking to open a mini-storage facility, the use-specific regulation improperly directs them towards 17.16.060, temporary uses in buildings. What this would do is just correct that to properly reference the mini-storage overlay, like the previous, or like the other zoning districts. For the third correction, 17.04.060, clarifying personal services low impact by the addition of estheticians, permanent makeup artists, and certified massage therapists to the definitions. Currently, staff interprets these definitions, they're very broad. What this would do is add more concrete examples of personal services, low impact, and professional offices to help in making determinations whether something's permitted by right or requires a use permit. This one will also help down the road when we have our zoning interpretation for massage therapy, massage therapists. And the fourth one is 17.16.090, car and vehicle washes. This updates to align with state law that was signed in September 25, 2012, requiring car washes to recycle 60%, at least 60% of their wash and rinse water. Currently, our codes also say that the water must be treated and filtered before it's discharged in the storm drain system. That will be changed to the sanitary sewer system in this revision. In addition, there was the addition of vehicle queuing to regulate car washes similar to how drive-through establishments are regulated within the city. Any questions on any of that?
I'd like to add one thing. On page 117 of your packets is a zoning interpretation having to do with massage establishments. This is a proposed policy that the DRC discussed at its last meeting. But we are not asking the planning commission to comment or act on it at this time. We will be meeting with the police chief and with one or more regulated massage parlors at the suggestion of our commissioners, and bring it back to you after we get that information.
Okay. Open a public hearing. Any comments from the public? I see none. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Discussion amongst the commissioners or any additional questions of staff? I don't see anybody raising any questions of staff. I had one, but it's probably not worth discussing. And I'm not sure how to explain it.
About the massage thing?
Huh?
About the massage thing?
Well, it's, first of all, we're going to adopt a motion to approve all four at the same time as opposed to one at a time. So what happens if we have a problem with one of them? Do we lose the whole thing? Or do we approve three and continue the fourth or?
You can bifurcate them if so desired, yeah.
I mean, that's built into the hearing? Okay. I just want that on the record so that in case a commissioner has a problem, that's how it would operate. I think that's all I have. Okay, I think I closed the public hearing. Ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2020-20.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Anyone want to change their vote? Seeing none?
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Wow. The next item on the agenda is reports, discussions, correspondence, commission reports, director's report. You did hold a.
Correct.
Is either, either one of the two commissioners want to talk about it at all or tell us what it is or what it was?
Basically, we just went over what you guys were discussing today, what we were adopting, proposing.
It's not, it's already, what you had is, has been before us.
Uh huh. Cal Water came out, made a great presentation, and.
I like to ask that because sometimes the commissioner hears something, I mean, the DRC hears, and there's a disconnect between that meeting and this meeting. So I want to be sure that, that if there is, that you can.
Most of the meeting, it was just the four of us. There wasn't very many other departments attended. So it went quite quickly.
Right, but there was quite a bit of discussion and some literature we received regarding massage establishments.
Okay.
And the connection between some, particularly in the Sacramento area, that are linked to human trafficking. And so we feel that by developing a set of requirements for these establishments, if the people balk at accepting our requirements, that's a red flag. So we're going to be very careful in how we permit and license.
Yeah.
And we just don't want to.
Right.
Create areas of wrongdoing and crime.
There was one thing I noticed when I went home. I discussed it with my husband, who used to be in law enforcement. And the, being able to walk into an establishment and not have a search warrant is illegal. So that needs to be thought about and readdressed.
I wondered about that.
Yeah, and that was, that was part of the, one of the things is they want to be able to go in and check. You can't just walk in and.
One of the conditions was that we could go in at any time.
Yeah, so it has to be a probable cause, and then a judge will decide that. And then that's when you receive. Anyway, that was the only thing I noted.
Or a voluntary inspection.
Yeah, yeah, if they're willing to. But otherwise, we have to stop.
Well, I wondered about that, but.
This is why we ask for comments from the police department, too. We want them to be on board with this.
Will this be at the next meeting? I mean.
That's our hope.
Yeah.
They're still working it through.
Okay. Now, director's report? Do we have an update on several things going on?
Yes. Couple of updates on projects that you've already reviewed and approved. One is the cell tower near the hospital, the AT&amp;T cell tower. We did get a proposed light design from the applicant, and we have asked the pilots for comments on that. It will be a red solid light at the top, and it will not raise the height of the tower at all. So we haven't heard from the pilots in a reasonable time. So we're going to go ahead and approve that for them based on the planning commission's direction. Secondly, at the last meeting, the rezoning of, or the general plan amendment of the property at the corp yard to R3 was approved by this commission. And Commissioner Darling asked about the possibility of this becoming spot zoning, which is discouraged. We looked into that, and we believe that this, even though it is spot zoning, it is acceptable because it is in the public's interest. And there are adjacent mixed-use zoning that also allows multifamily housing. So what we'll do is, we'll quote the case law in that, in that, and add it to the staff report when it goes to council. Speaking of council, the council met Tuesday. And for those that didn't listen in, they approved joining the community choice aggregation program with the County of Butte and the City of Chico, which means that sooner or later, we'll be buying power directly, bypassing PG&E, and hopefully saving Orville residents and businesses dollars on their energy bills in the long term. Secondly, they extended the emergency ordinance allowing temporary RVs and mobile homes from the camp fire, which has been going on for a year and a half. And we have added the bear fire and the north complex fire to that. So displaced persons from those fires will have until the end of June of 2021 to have temporary RVs, subject to an administrative permission. So displaced persons from those fires will have until the end of June of 2021 to have temporary RVs subject to an administrative permit. There is a 45-day grace period where they can set up without a permit, but after that, they have to have a permit. That, that campfire, 45 days long, has long expired, but now one has started for the, the Bear Fire. And our young man did the, did the staff report that went to council for that as well. Upcoming, this planning commission is going to be busy for the next few months. The next DRC meeting will be on November 12, that's Thursday, and Commissioners Sears and Flickers will be the attendees. The likely projects so far are 40-unit senior apartments at Mitchell Avenue. There are two vacant lots behind Days Inn at Mitchell near Feather River Boulevard. And one of those lots is proposed for this 40-unit project. Because this project meets the general plan and zoning requirements, it will go to the development review committee. It will not need to come to the planning commission as a whole. The second project is by the same developer, AMG. They tomorrow will send us plans for a 40-unit supportive housing complex on Nelson Avenue, right next door to the county clerk's office. Vacant lot there behind Prospect School, and they're calling it Prospect View. That will also go to the development review committee meeting. It will not need to come to the planning commission unless their, a use permit is triggered as well. Another project is a proposed drive-through and liquor sale license at the old Esmeralda Market on Oro Dam Boulevard, right behind Panda Express there, which has been a vacant market for a long time. And Mark Mendez is the applicant for that. That is a use permit. That will come to the planning commission. Other future projects are the Ron Harmon Mine Extension for five years, the veterans' housing at 711 Montgomery, which is a 12-unit veterans' housing project, which is a planned unit development, a general plan amendment, and a rezone. So that will be coming to the commission. A use permit for Maguire Suites, used to be Western Motor Lodge. We've had lots of activity with that project, many code compliance issues. We're waiting to bring that use permit to you for approval pending lots of work and lots of communication with the applicant. They, we inspected the property on Tuesday, and it has deteriorated since the last inspection. So there is a new property manager with more resources, and hopefully we'll get lots and lots of code compliance issues and health and safety code issues and fire inspection issues dealt with and properly dealt with before we bring this to the commission for an approved use permit. And then the proposed massage policy that we've talked about already.
Just a few items of note. Wes has covered the planning items, but I have some other just general items to cover. The Olive Grove cleanup, you'll notice at the top of Table Mountain and Grand, that orchard is being cleared out. And that is to prep for the build of the Olive Grove apartment complex. And there is 80.
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six units in the Phase 1 of that. And so with that also, the six apartment complexes have received their tax credit approvals, their 9% tax credit approvals. So we will be having those projects coming forward soon as well. Wes had mentioned some of them. Also, at the Corporation Yard for the City of Orville, there will be a solar array erected out there. It's beginning now. They're breaking ground this week, and so that solar array will help offset the cost of the city's power usage. Our municipal auditorium is currently under a remodel. The council has contracted with the YMCA to occupy and run the municipal auditorium because currently our YMCA is the smallest in California, if not the United States. So they're contracted. We were hoping to get them in sooner, but there are much-needed and long-overdue repairs to be made at the municipal auditorium. Many of them are near completion, but right now, and you'll see the roof is currently being replaced. There was many leaks that were, we were unaware of, and so those are being corrected. And now the bathrooms are being brought up to accessible standard. You know, I honestly, I'm not sure. I think they're going to keep the small one because of the pool.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. That's my assumption. I will confirm that.
They are definitely keeping both of them open.
Yes, they are. Thank you. No.
So they're not.
Not at this time. They're going to take it over. It'll still be owned by the city, and they will just lease it from the city. But they will also be in charge of events, renting, yep, the location for the events. Yes. Yeah, so following the arson fire last year, the stage has been rebuilt, new stage curtains are being put in, a new sound system, PA system, and projector system are being put in the building as well. So then it'll be more conducive to having events, productions, things of that nature. Did you, Maverick Fueling Station, we're hoping they will break ground soon. They're in the final review of their building permit application. And then the, as you've seen, the Starbucks, their art has gone up on their three panels on the exterior. And so that's been nice to see, something local. So that were, those were my items. Thank you.
Did they appoint our commissioners that requested to be?
So I do have an update on commissioner applications. I, the city administrator and I are working to try to get an executive committee meeting set up for November 10. And at that time, they'll be able to go over all of the commission applications because we have several commissions and committees that have vacancies for various reasons. And so we're going to have the executive committee look at those, and then they'll go forward to the council for recommendation and approval. And so that, that is coming, hopefully, maybe the second meeting in November or the first one in December, we'll finally get it on the agenda for approval. And then also just from that, too, just a reminder, the next two planning commission meetings in November and in December are going to be on the third Thursday instead of the fourth Thursday because of the holidays.
So that'll be the, for November and December?
Yes.
Third Thursday. How many people applied for the planning? Are you allowed to tell us that?
I believe, so there were the ones currently on the commission that requested to have their applications, or to be reappointed. And then I believe, I want to say I have three or four other applicants that are not currently on the planning commission.
And we have three openings right now?
We have the two, or we have the, we have one vac, two vacancies because Randy is sitting in for us until we fill one, and then the ones that wanted to be reappointed.